The participants coming in. Yeah, try to here. Books and have a little issue with my. iPad, so bear with me, I apologize. Okay. All right, like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley. School Board work session of February 1st, 2021. And we're going to begin as we always do with the moment of silence. And first is in memory of all the lives that were lost due to COVID-19 and in reflection. For those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or who have been negatively impacted. The second one that I'd like to. Ask everyone to keep in their memory is in the memory of Samantha Sam Condrick. She's from SV class of 2019, who sadly passed away on Saturday, January 30. Ms. Condrick, who was attending the University of Kentucky, was a student leader at Seneca Valley. In addition to active involvement in numerous school events and organizations, she was also. A member of the Seneca Valley Girls Tennis Team. Ms. Condrick was a wonderful classmate and teammate and will be sorely messed. Our thoughts go out to her family and friends during this difficult time. Also, there are some board members who would like to make some comments, so I'm going to first turn to Mr. Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. President, I. I just wanted to take a second, this one to me is personal. I didn't know Sam for that long, but I met her. Through an award I was receiving and she agreed to. Introduce me for that and interview me for that, and so I got to know her and she. Trying to think of the words described, but she's just, she was a beautiful, free. Spirit and. And again, I didn't know her as well as I'm sure others did, but I will miss her already. And this is one of those times where. You know, I I'm a firm believer in God's plan for us. And in one respect, I I'm comforted by the fact that this is a part of some larger plan, but by the same token. I'm a little angry. At that plan, so. She will be missed and I just wanted to. Take a few moments, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel, also, Ms. Whittle, you wanted to make some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't know how, there really isn't words, so I'm just going to tell you how. She has presented to us as early as her sophomore year, she's come to that podium. And she's represented our school district, she's represented her family, she represented her friends. With great respect. Good manners, eloquent. But the thing that I remember most about her was her contagious enthusiasm. For her for her student body. She would approach me at, I mean, any event I went to, whether it was them dancing to raise money. For that the thon that they did, or if it was. At a chorus concert, she would always approach me with enthusiasm and ask me, why can't the board do this? Why can't the board do that? She had a visionary, the only thing she lacked was the experience and whatever I told her, she was very thoughtful. Listen. Our family is hurting, my daughter is devastated, these things aren't supposed to happen. My condolences go to our family, the leadership qualities that. She had at our school, I know that she continued at the University of Kentucky. And as Mr. Nichols said, I think there's a plan out there and she will appear. In the way God wants it to be, thank you for the time, God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle, are there any other board members who'd like to make a comment? Scroll over and don't see any. Dr. Vitale?
I would just add that all of us knew Sam, you couldn't be at Seneca Valley and not know Sam, so our condolences. To her parents and her sisters and her extended family on behalf of the administration. And the staff here. I just also want her parents and her family to know tonight. That we started a meeting this morning with one of Sam's jokes. Yeah, she used to send us daily jokes via email. I don't know in my entire career if a student has ever sent me a daily joke, but Sam did, so I pulled one up from her years here and we started one of our meetings with one of her jokes today. And so that was the kind of laughter she wanted for others, that was the kind of happiness she wanted for others. And we will try to keep that in mind as we go about our day and. Go about the rest of our year that her spirit and her happiness lives with us, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Ms. Bradle?
Yes, thank you. I just really wanted to basically reiterate what. Ms. Whittle said, Mr. Nickel and Dr. Vitale, I had met Samantha. In kindergarten, she went to school with my youngest. In kindergarten and first grade, she was charismatic, she was a leader, she was the one that you know that would take. The class far and she did, she was the student council president. As she exited Seneca Valley and everyone said, if anybody's going to get anything done in this class, it would be Samantha. She was a bright spot and I just wanted to express. My sympathy to her family and her friends because like Ms. Whittle said, it hit home and. This young life lost way too soon, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradle, any other board members? Well, seeing none, then I would ask everyone if they would join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and at this time, we're going to have our our pledge of allegiance and typically, as you know, we've had an I led the pledge student. But because of the potential weather issues, we're going to delay that until. Next month, so we're going to do this old fashioned way where I'm going to to take the lead and ask that. Anyone that is able, please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, at this time, we'll move on to the roll call and Stacy, you are online, I believe.
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Bradle?
Here.
Mr. Detulio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Widowson?
Here.
Thank you very much, we'll move on to our information reports, Ms. Andreasy.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President. We have one item of recognition this evening, the Seneca Valley Raider Battalion marksmanship team. Hit the bullseye when they brought home the Western Pennsylvania Army JROTC League Trophy. After placing first at the Western Pennsylvania Army JROTC League Two defeating championship. The team competed at Seneca Valley Senior High on January 23rd defeating Butler High School. Albert Gallatin High School, Beaver High School and Connelsville High School. The team was led by the top three shooters in the competition, including team captain and senior Garrett DeVault, who placed first. Freshman Logan Randall, who placed second and senior Alex Matusiak, who came in third. Other contributors to the team's overall victory are junior Ryan Broad and sophomore Lexi Bartos. We can congratulate all of them for a fantastic showing. Underdates to remember. February is National Black History Month. February 8th, we will return here for our school board regular meeting again at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Or on Zoom. February 12th, which is next Friday is a vacation day, there is no school for students. And on Monday, February 15th, it is President's Day, and unless you have any questions, Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Andreasy, is there any questions or comments for Ms. Andreasy? Seeing anyone. So we will just move on in the meeting then. We'll go to our agency reports, we'll start off with the vote text, so Mr. Peterson and Mr. Jacobs.
As President, I don't know that we have much to offer. Things seem to be going as smoothly as possible under the current circumstances. And our next JOC meeting, Joint Operating Committee meeting is this Thursday. So if there's something that comes out of that that's critical, we'll share it with you next week. Mr. Jacobs, anything to add?
Only that I think the 2122 budget is the primary item for Thursday, so after we have that discussion, we'll have that information for this board.
Thank you very much, are there any questions? For Mr. Peterson or Mr. Jacobs? Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to the IU, we did have our meeting last week. A few items, the first one is our business manager Patricia Conley has turned in her resignation, she. Actually went from having a drive of over an hour to a drive of less than 10 minutes, so it's kind of hard to. To argue with her on that one, she will be missed, she was a very. Punchantist business manager for us and did a lot of good work, so we're in the process of looking for new business manager at the IU. Hopefully we'll be able to do that here in the next month, month and a half, something like that. We also reviewed the preliminary budget and we're going to be moving that along, it looks like it'll be. It's a decrease and the contribution for the general fund that the school districts, the 27 school districts pay. Will not increase, it'll be the 28th year, I believe, that there's been no increase in in that contribution. And then the last big item that we we talked about was, and I think I've mentioned this before, we've had issues with the HVAC system in the building. And we have gone out and we had presentations from a number of engineering companies and architects. On it and we have decided to go with IKM, who most people here will know that those are the the architect we used on our aquatic facility. They're going to do the the engineering for us and you know, take care of the bidding process, so it's someone that. I was very comfortable with knowing, you know, the success that we've had with IKM here. So are there any questions for me on the IU? Hearing, seeing none, we're going to move on. In our agenda and you'll notice in your backups that you have the financial reports for operations, senior high activities. Intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food service, tax collection reports and the capital projects funds. So if you have any questions with any of that, either you have or you can address those to Ms. Bertner. Move on to our diversity, equity and inclusions, the DEI update and Dr. Vitale and the core team, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have shared with the board and the public before, we are very focused on doing diversity and equity and inclusion work in our school district. Making sure that we are examining our curriculum, making sure that our staff, including administration teachers and support staff have the resources that they need to be able. To make sure that we are being a fair and inclusive school district. We recently had a training session, an all day training session with our diversity consultant, Dr. Tricia Gadsden. We had that with approximately 40 leadership team members, principals, directors, that was held on Wednesday, January 20. We discussed the following topics, how to develop racial literacy as a norm in our school district. What does that mean exactly racial literacy? That is understanding terms and a common language. Acquiring the terms and skills to have a conversation about race. Developing an accurate historical and sociological view of race as tools to talk about race and its impact. On our school as a system and on our society as a whole. Recognizing that this skill must be developed, it's not something we're born with, but it also must be intentional and it must be our priority in our school district. We talked more about how do we have racialized conversations, racialized conversations we define with our diversity expert. As discourse that intentionally identifies race and the impact of race on one's own life. We talked about systems and structural conventions or customs that uphold oppression, what causes that? What are things that we don't often see and how can we dig a little deeper on those topics as school administrators? We talked about anti racism, what is it, what is it not? And anti racist strategies and how to put those in practice in our schools. We talked about a racial equity lens, looking at all of the things we do here at Seneca Valley through this lens. Then the principals reported out on DEI initiatives in each of their buildings. They are just getting started in this work of knowing and understanding DEI work, but then trying to operationalize it. And I spoke to you last month about DEI work from the technical approach. So you're an equal opportunity employer, you check that box, you have an EEOC statement, you check that box, those are all technical responses. To DEI work, we're, we are working now with adaptive responses. What tools do our administrators need to be able to do the things that I just discussed? What do our teachers need, what resources do we need to focus on as a school district? So the principals reported out what they've been doing since March of 2020. And they reported out on what they have done in each of their buildings to begin to operationalize racial equity. They reported out what has worked well and what are the challenges? And then our diversity expert gave them her opinion and she had a team member with her that day as well. On how they could go about looking at those challenges differently and what advice she might have for them. So that is some of the topics that we discussed, certainly not all, it was an all day training. I will continue as promised to give the board updates on our diversity, equity and inclusion work each month, at least once a month, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments for Dr. Vitale. On this, I'm trying to go through my screens here, so bear with me, if there's a board member, it might be easier if you just shout out if you also want to. Make a comment. So seeing known, we look forward to the additional updates and we'll move on in the agenda now to the COVID-19 update and we'll go back to Dr. Vitale.
Thank you, I think many people in our public have heard me talk about all of these. Data sources that are publicly accessible data from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, from the CDC. From the Pennsylvania Department of Education and we follow all of these daily sources every day. And we track a number of the COVID numbers, a number different, a number of different data points. The first data point I know that many have heard me talk about before is the early warning dashboard. As of today, it is showing Butler County's PCR positivity rate at 8.6, that is really great, certainly would love to see it at zero. But this is the lowest it has been for quite some time and the week prior. It was up over 10% and you've heard me say we need to be under 10% to meet one of two thresholds to move back to moderate. The state average for the PCR positivity rate is sitting at about 9.3%, which again is very good. As a county, we need to continue to keep the PCR positivity rate under 10%. In order to move to moderate, so we meet that one threshold as of this week. They typically update that early warning dashboard, they used to update it. The PA DOH on Thursday evenings, we noticed now it's getting updated Friday afternoon or Friday night, if you're interested in following that. Also, when this was updated Friday evening. Our numbers that we're following and this is another threshold you've heard me talk about is incident rate. So this is where the state takes the most recent seven days, the PA DOH, and they compare it to the last seven days. So the most recent seven days, January 22nd through the 28th. And I know today is not the 28th, so this data is about four to five days behind typically. Is the incident rate is calculated per 100,000 residents, we have approximately 200,000 residents in Butler County. And I think they use the last census data and so that's around 180, 190. Our incident rate is at 138.9, we need to be at 100 to move to moderate, you've heard me say that before. But this is down significantly since we returned from the winter break. Last week it was at 206.5 and so you see we're at 138.9, we're getting much, much closer to being moved into moderate. So it should be noted, we do not yet meet the incident rate, we are close, but we do not yet meet it. The differences in the confirmed cases seven days versus the previous seven days is about 136, you see the difference in only one week. The Butler County, Butler County daily COVID rate. Where you can access the Pennsylvania data through the DOH and then you can sort it by county. And you can also sort it by zip codes, which is quite interesting and we do that every day in my office, Lisa Missland on the call with us does this. So with this rate, we take a formula that Dr. Ulsterholm from the University of Minnesota, CIDRAP. Uses and has been using since June or July. And that's where he recommends that you take another look at this data through the lens of a 14 day rolling average. When we first started school, you heard me talk about how we were looking at about four to five new cases per day and then we saw that quickly grow. Today's 14 day rolling average is 72.5. This is the lowest 14 day rolling average we've seen in the county since November 15th, so again, this is really good news. Would like to see it even lower, but this, the data keeps tracking in the right direction. Ever since we returned from winter break, it keeps tracking in the right direction and going down, so we we like to see that. Under zip code COVID cases, so this is where we take all the zip codes in our school district. We also grab the Mars zip code, which people say, why would you do that, that's not Seneca Valley, actually there are students who have a Mars post office. Zip code that go to Seneca Valley, so we grabbed those, so not all of those in those zip code may be attributed to Seneca Valley, but we grabbed that just to make sure we're we're looking at. Multiple data sources over the entire weekend, so as of Friday, Saturday and Sunday, there were only 42 new cases in this entire school district. We have about 50,000 people in the Seneca Valley School District approximately. So we were averaging about 14 a day on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But we also know some of that data drops off on the weekends, so we want to pay attention to that tomorrow. And Tuesday and Wednesday where we usually see the data level out, but we have not seen the data track up since we returned. From the winter break, since we brought students back in the cohort model, so that's been very promising, we are cautiously optimistic. And we have continued to study all of the different data. The Butler County transmission level category, you've heard me talk about. The substantial, the moderate and the low. And we noticed that three counties in the state of Pennsylvania as of Friday did come out of the substantial range into moderate, so. Two of those are rural counties, one is more suburban and rural and with a college in its town, a fairly large state college. So we're glad to see that counties are moving from substantial to moderate. If we had to predict, we think there's a good chance Seneca Valley, our zip codes and our county would be moving more in that moderate range because we keep trending down. Probably by the next update on Friday. But you've heard me say that we also want to try to be in that for two consecutive weeks before we come back five full days a week. We also have been warned by health experts to keep in mind the variants and the COVID variants that are appearing. Although we don't know exactly where they are because the United States is behind in tracking these variants and the genome sequencing. So we're not experts in that area, we are consulting with local doctors, local infectious disease doctors. And epidemiologists, so we do want to be cognizant and recognize we don't know enough about the variants yet. We have approximately to date 45 staff members that have now been vaccinated out of approximately 895. 45 is very exciting, but we need to get a lot further with the vaccination schedule and we know. That while many of our local hospitals stand ready to assist. And to open large scale vaccination clinics, the vaccine is limited, so we will keep you updated on that, we keep pushing, we're still in the 1A. Classification, you hear about all of that on the news and until we get to 1B, all of our teachers and educators and administrators will not be vaccinated until they get to 1B. So that depends on the county, it depends on the availability in this state from the federal government where they receive the vaccine. Today, if you look at our COVID dashboard, you will see that we have 18 student cases, that's out of approximately 7,400 students. And we have six active staff cases and that is again, out of about 983, we range between 980, 987 on any given week. And that does not count bus drivers, they are employed outside of the school district. So we would not be counting them if we have cases there, although the bus companies work really well with us and do alert us when we have any cases there. So at this point. We have studied the data and we are prepared to make a recommendation to the board this evening, it has been put on the public agenda. We are not yet ready to bring students back five days a week. And we are not yet ready to bring our secondary students, grades seventh through 12th back five days a week. Because what we know about the limited amount of research, what we know today, we know more than what we did in June and July, but we're still learning. And what we have been told by pediatricians and what the research has shown us from a number of medical journals. Is that ages 10 and under, while they may be getting COVID, they're not transmitting it at the rate that our teenagers are, our teenagers. Are transmitting more similarly to the adults. And there are a number of medical reasons for that and I'm certainly not an expert in that category, but I read all of those journals. And we also know that many epidemiologists believe 11 and 12 year olds aren't transmitting it quite at the level that the 13 and up are. And so this evening I would invite Dr. McCarty, our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary to talk to the board about the possibility. Of bringing back the kindergarten through sixth graders for a return next week and what we're calling a four and one model. And then I would invite Mr. Miller, Jerry Miller, our Director of Special Education to talk to the board about a plan to bring back all special education children first. These would be phases in a plan to eventually get all of our students back five days a week. But at this point, we cannot accommodate all of our students when it comes to spacing. I know that you may hear about a neighboring district and you want to compare and I've said this before. Every district has different sized buildings with a different amount of square footage. With a different design and layout, so some school districts can do the six feet apart at lunch with the mask down and other districts cannot. Up until this week, we could not do that with our elementary students. But Dr. McCarty and I met with union leaders and Dr. McCarty will talk with you about some of the teachers that volunteered to do something different in a model. That we could look at for this evening, Dr. McCarty.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, as everyone's aware, our goal continues to be getting our students in school as much as possible in a safe manner. To that end, you just heard the updated information and research by Dr. Vitale and we have the ability to provide a model. That does allow us to get students in more in person instruction. This four and one model that Dr. Vitale referenced does provide us for all students. Grades kindergarten through sixth grade who chose in person instruction to attend four days a week in person, that's Monday through Thursday. Friday would continue to be remote and as a reminder, we need the remote Friday to preemptively close for three days. To contact trace and to reset our numbers. Without this remote Friday, we do run the risk of many temporary closures. And just please keep in mind, having said as much, we'll continue to monitor because it's still potentially possible. That we may have to close a building based on the numbers described by PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education. Our main challenge was to create a plan that allows us to provide six foot separation when children are not wearing masks. Primarily, this occurs during lunch and breakfast. So with the help of teacher volunteers, as Dr. Vitale referenced, we are able to have a percentage of children that can eat in classrooms. As well as spaces beyond the cafeteria to maintain that six foot distance across all six of our K4 and 56 middle schools. And again, to that end, what we've been very fortunate working with the teacher union and teachers volunteering, this allows us to create enough. Physical space that we can have children separated to remove the mask, obviously eat lunch and or breakfast, depending on the circumstance. And then when we're back in class, obviously masks will. And then when we're back in class, obviously masks will be on and we'll be doing all of the safety precautions, of course, to make sure we maintain distance and so forth. So at this point, we are going to turn it over to Mr. Miller. He's our Director of Special Education. We will share the plan to address our children with special needs.
Thank you, Dr. McCarty. So as you, as you remember, the last time we were together, I spoke to the board about some concerns that we had about our students with special needs. And I know that you know that we're currently bringing some high needs, special needs students into, into the classrooms for days a week. But the last time we were together, I shared with you the concern that we have about other students who are not, not able to access. Their instruction remotely. So I told you that I would come back to you with some thoughts and ideas about how we can increase the numbers of our students with special needs attending in-person instruction. So obviously, Dr. McCarty has a plan in place to bring all students kindergarten through sixth grade. Back to in-person instruction four days a week. So obviously that encompasses. All of our students with special needs K to six. So essentially that, that takes care of the concerns that I have at that level. The next level is obviously seven through twelve. So, you know, I going to the. Principals at the secondary level, talking to them about, you know, how we could increase the numbers, how we could bring some additional. Students with special needs back. And, you know, I, I went through several scenarios with them and at the end of the discussion. Basically, they all agreed that it would be better if we brought all the students with special needs back at this point. Based on the data that Dr. Vitale was talking about. And our ability to, to make sure that these students are safe. The plan would be, as you see, you know, you have a motion before you tonight to bring all students back, all students with special needs back K to twelve. Four days a week for in-person instruction. Obviously, that's K to six. And then, you know, at the secondary level, it would be all of our students with special needs, seven through twelve. So they would all attend. And then obviously, hopefully, you know, things continue to go well, then, then, you know, our other students could return. But, you know, it was, it was unanimous. Across our building principals and administration that, that, you know, we were ready to, to bring our students with special needs back and keep them safe as we're doing it.
Thank you to both of you. I do want to thank the teachers, the elementary teachers that volunteered. For some of them to give up their lunch and eat with students in their classroom, not the entire class, but most likely half of the class. And without them volunteering, this plan would not work. So I do want to thank them. They give and they just keep giving. And I know it's, it's a really tough time for them. I know that it can be somewhat fearful too because of the unknown. So I want to thank them for being brave. And doing all the things that they've been doing since last, last March. I know that the safest thing for us to do is stay at home. I know that is, I, I think many of us agree that's probably the safest thing, but we are trying to balance. The instructional model with the safety of our students and our staff. And so this, we don't bring this to you lightly this evening. It won't be easy to do if we have teachers who volunteered, who get sick or who need to quarantine. The administration has to be prepared to cover those teachers as well. And so we are prepared to do that. We also want to recognize that we want all children to be back K to twelve. We just can't do that yet. This is another step in the right direction. We must proceed cautiously and we must be ready to change if need be. And we must be prepared to accept that there could be temporary closure. So far, we've had a pretty good month without any temporary closures. We also have to accept there could be more quarantines. Because we cannot keep children in our elementary classrooms all six feet apart. We can now while they're eating, but we cannot do this in every classroom during instruction. Now they will have masks on and we'll do our very best. But another question you might ask is, well, how are we meeting the attestation form? Under the attestation form, as you've heard me talk about, the two major requirements are the masking order. And the meeting the thresholds on the temporary closures. But there are all these tentacles to those two items. It's not as easy as just meeting the masking requirements. There are specific things in each of those that we have to make sure that we meet. And now with teachers stepping up to volunteer, we can more easily accommodate the six feet at lunch. We have great concern, as do many of our parents. You know, I, I've listened to both sides of this argument. And it gets really difficult when you hear how emotional some of our parents are and we are very empathetic. We have really tried to think of all the different ways we can do this safely. In Seneca Valley, our numbers are fairly low, you know, when you look at our dashboard. And we know that that's because of all of the team members here, all of the staff members being conscientious. About keeping children safe and keeping one another safe. And so again, I want to thank everyone who has had a hand in this plan. This will be the board's decision. We can now meet the attestation form. It won't be easy. And it could be difficult in the next several weeks, but you know, we believe the numbers are trending in the right direction. They continue to. This hasn't been a one week thing. They continue to trend down. We believe you will be in the moderate probably by Friday. Of this week before we would recommend that children, some populations of children to return four days a week. And then if the numbers keep trending, a second week in the moderate, which is what we all want to see. Would there are motions on the agenda. So when we get to those motions and they're put on the table, at that point, I would encourage the board to ask questions and deliberate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And what we will do is we're going to move on. We'll get these motions started and let's have the, the discussions if there is any or any comments, we'll, we'll have it then if everyone's agreeable to that. So we're going to move on real quick. And just go through this technicality here. No public comment. So we're going to move on and I'm going to read this next motion. And I'm going to ask for a motion for special education kindergarten to grade twelve in-person instruction. To approve the return of students with special needs, grades kindergarten through twelve, who have chosen the in-person model. To four days a week, Monday through Thursday, in person and remote Fridays, beginning on Monday, February eighth, twenty twenty one. This includes any students with an individualized education plan, learning support. Emotional support, autistic support, speech and language. This Friday, February fifth, twenty twenty one. Elementary special education teachers will be given a half day in the afternoon to prepare for this transition. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Tullio.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Any discussion? And I'm going to ask, so I don't have to scroll too far. If you could just call out, Tim, I do see you. So, Mr. Hester.
Thanks, Mr. DeTulio. I appreciate it. You know, this, this decision scares me, frightens me, and I'm very concerned about it. For many reasons. I swear, I understand that the kids need to be back to school. I know they need to be back with their friends. I know they need to be back with their teachers. And I feel so badly they're not there. I feel so guilty that they're not there and I wish there was more we could do. I, I, I'm scared if we do go back that. Anything could happen. We could have, you know, kids get sick, we could have staff get sick. It really pains me to have to even make this decision again, but it's a decision we're, we're brought forward with it. You know, I look at it, I've waited all day, I've gone back and forth with several people all day, talking about it and trying to just come up with what's the right solution. I understand there's not one. I understand we're all come from our own areas and own thoughts. You know, my, my issue is that we still don't have spacing in the elementary schools. We still don't have social distancing in elementary schools. The buses are going to be crowded. The classrooms are still going to be crowded. And I understand we've worked out the cafeteria situation and I'm comfortable with that. And I'm really comfortable. The numbers are coming down. I really, you know, I love the fact the numbers are coming down. And I'm not sure what level would make me even more comfortable. I am also concerned that if we do this, before we know it, we're going to be fully remote for a week. And I know that's going to be even tougher on the parents. So those are my thoughts. Even at this second, I'm not sure which way I want to go, but I needed to throw out my thoughts and my concerns and let all the parents and the, and the teachers and the staff out there know that. This decision weighs on us all and it's a tough one to make. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Very quickly, and I apologize. I know, Ms. Woodison, I did see your hand up as well, but I, I need to make a correction to the motion I just read. And I would ask Mr. Nickel and Mr. Jacobs for a friendly amendment. And this would be in the last sentence of the motion, which says this Friday, February fifth, twenty twenty one. Elementary special education teachers would be given a half day. That should be. K to twelve, special education teachers. So it's all the special education teachers. So I would ask for.
I'm happy to make an amendment to the motion to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to take care of that. Sorry, folks. It's a technicality we have to take care of. So, Mr. Woodison, I did see raising your hand. So I'm going to call on you next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Have to echo a lot of what Mr. Hester said. I too. Have gone back and forth on this. No one would dispute how critically important it is to get all of our students back and everybody would be delighted. To have everybody back five days a week, full-time school. I am just having such a hard time coming to terms with even four days and then the Friday remote. For a lot of reasons. We have shown. That the cohort is working. Is it good? Probably not. Obviously, the best is to have. What we're shooting for tonight or the five days. But at least it's working and we're continuing to drive the numbers down. And with vaccines becoming hopefully more available. Let's take the time and sit back and get the staff. More staff vaccinated, the staff that wants to be vaccinated. And Dr. Vitale has referred several times to Dr. Ulster home. And I have taken some time and listened to him and I happened to, to catch him over the weekend and I'm going to have to paraphrase because I was busy and I didn't catch exactly what he said, but. I think the essence of what he said is there's a storm brewing with the variants that are out there. And we don't know what's going to come, but he said it could be a very dark time over the next couple of weeks. I don't think that it's wise right now to switch our course. Let's continue to drive the numbers down. My other concern is, although I realize the teachers have volunteered. I don't feel comfortable with them in a room, although they will be masked and then hopefully around Plexiglas, but the students will not. And the CDC is saying it's safe for people to be together if everyone is masked. And obviously to eat lunch, they're not going to be able to do that. I also share Mr. Hester's concerns with the bus. I think we have too many wild variables out there. To move forward at this point in time, I think we should sit, sit and take another couple of weeks. Look at the numbers and see what the data is continuing to tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodison. Any other board members would like to make a comment? Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm deeply appreciative of the last two speakers' concerns. However, I intend and vote in favor of these two proposals, these two motions. For several reasons. One is that the numbers that we see, the numbers that Dr. Osterholm, for instance, refers to are, are. Countrywide. The, the countrywide epidemiological experience of this novel virus. And Dr. Vitale has done, I think, a remarkable job in bringing those numbers home to us. Not just at the county level, but at the zip code level. The fact of the matter is. There seems to be a carve out. For students, younger people. Where the, the, the disease is not as. Transmissible or pathogenic. And I think that there's oftentimes in population health and public health. Where there's not a perfect answer, where you have to weigh one imperfect option against another imperfect option. I think what we have going for us here is a school district that is just on its tiptoes about. Monitoring and reacting to changes as they come. So I'm comfortable that if indeed Dr. Osterholm's prediction. That the dark, the darkest winter is about to come. I do believe that we'll be ready to, to change very quickly. Another thing that gives me comfort is the fact that most of, or the high, high majority of significant majority. Of the cases we have seen have not been school acquired, but rather have been community acquired. That, that we're not passing the disease from student to student to student. But rather, students are becoming. Infected in their, in their communities, their community activities. What I do hear in many of the. Letters that are sent to us from parents, some with a great deal of heat. Is that while we're, we're being hyper vigilant about the virus. It appears to some at least that the kids that need the special help are not getting that help, that the parents are frustrated at home. And that they cannot provide the kind of help they think their kids need. Only the school can do that. So I think that in my mind, I'm going from an imperfect answer. In terms of how we deal with the virus. To an imperfect answers in terms of how we deal with behavioral, emotional and social needs. And at this point, I think the latter option becomes the rule, the most important. And for that reason, I'm going to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Nickel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not having any trouble with this decision at all tonight. You know, the, I would, I would say that Dr. Vitale. I would slightly disagree. You made a comment that the safest thing to do is to keep our students. Out of our classrooms. And, and Mr. Peterson, you just alluded to what I was going to make a point of, which is. The, the mental health concerns and the safety of our students, the safety of our families. We cannot, we cannot ignore the mental health, the emotional aspects of what the current model. Or full virtual is doing, has done, will do to our students and to their families. And so I. Unconditionally will support, support this motion and the next one and we'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any others? Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, please. Regardless of, I guess, how we vote tonight, I, I just wanted to take a second to thank. Dr. Vitale, Dr. McCarty, Mr. Miller, Nurse Williams. For constantly. As Mr. Peterson said, striking the right balance. And bringing this motion to us, it would have been easier for that team to stay in cohort for the rest of the year. And I believe that we can do this sustainably. And if we do it sustainably. It will give our, our special education kids and our elementary kids much more time in the classroom. For which I'm very appreciative of. And as the parent of three elementary students, I am very appreciative to those teachers. Who, like Dr. Vitale said, are giving more of their time so that our kids can be in school. So. Again, regardless of how we vote, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Ms. Harrison?
I wanted to just agree with Mr. Jacobs to thank the whole administration for everything they've done. Their goal has always been, I think, to get the students back in the classroom where they belong. Everybody agrees. Emotionally, educationally, that's where the best things happen. And they didn't do that. They took the safe route until the numbers told them that it was safe. So I agree that this is a good start. And if we need to back off of some terrible thing, if this. The other types of viruses, COVID. if this, the other types of viruses, COVID, um, rears its ugly head, we can always back off. It's, it's not an, a duel. So I agree with it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison. Uh, Ms. Whittle?
Thank you, Mr. Tullio. Um, I haven't been comfortable since about a year ago when we had our first, uh, inkling of this. Um, I'm in the healthcare and we had something starting to creep into the skilled nurse, nursing facilities, and it was an unknown. Haven't had any comfort whatsoever of, of COVID. Um, we've all, as a board administration, we've been on this ride, and I respect everybody's opinion and full-heartedly respect everybody on the board and their opinions. Um, we all come from different places. Um, and everyone is, their opinion is all on safety, so I, I respect everybody and thank you. Um, but the things that I do know is, and I, and I feel comfortable with, is the safety precautions that our school district has invested and implements. Um, what I do know is if those numbers start creeping up and the science starts telling us that we need to make adjustment, Dr. Vitale and her team were pivoting. Um, have to ask the community, like we have been, to make this happen, for our sports to continue and for schools, please do our part at home, and everybody has to buy in and still wear your mask in public, social distance when possible, stay in your pods, and it has to be a community effort, um, and input. Um, it's not a comfortable, um, feeling, um, but I feel that the best decision for our children and for the safety, mental health, with all those safety precautions that we've had in place from day one, um, I will be voting, um, yes, and, uh, get those younger kiddos and the special needs kids into our classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Um, I guess, Ms. Bradel, I'll, I'll offer up to you since you're the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Tullio. Um, I would just like to say that I am in favor of this motion. Um, I didn't really have a tough decision in my own mind on which way I would go this evening. Um, I think it's very important to get our youngest learners and our special need learners in the classroom. I think we have done, um, a really good job at balancing, um, safety, uh, with the benefit of where, or what our students can get from this. Um, I think that, uh, the mental consequences of not sending them can be just as devastating as the virus. And, uh, like, um, Mr. Peterson said, we have not seen the transmission within the schools. So I think that it, it's time to move forward, and, um, if we have to take two steps backward at some point, then we have to, but I am definitely in favor of both of these motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradel. Um, I, I guess I'll, I'll close out the comments from, from the board. Um, you know, this whole pandemic has, has done one thing, you know, with disrupting the, the education model that, um, that we know is the best, which is a five days, uh, in person. So this drive to five has always been, you know, part of what, what I've kept in, in the back of my head, you know, getting everyone back. We got curveballs thrown at us, you know, all throughout this process. Um, and, and I know folks have, um, you know, compared, well, why not? You know, we get all the communication and we'll talk about, you know, how many we, more we got, uh, in the last week. But why can't we do what, you know, XYZ School District is doing? You know, they're going back five days. Well, a lot of that, you know, when we've talked about this, but there's, you know, two hundred and eighteen plus folks joining us, uh, for this meeting. You know, one of the things that, that other districts might have, uh, or definitely do have that went back to the five days was, you know, they have the extra space. Uh, one of the things that we are lucky enough to be in a, a great community that has been growing, and it has also, uh, caused us, you know, to need to build new buildings, and as you know, we, we're putting one in at Ermen because of that. So our buildings were more full than others, so that going back five days wasn't always, uh, an option for us. This drive to five that we're doing, uh, with this four-in-one model is allowing it to happen because we're, we're doing it with our most special learners and with the elementary. And those are the kids that, you know, we can space out more. We, we do have some more room because those are, are multiple buildings, and it's not like the secondary campus. It's not to say that we're not still looking at the drive to five for the secondary campus, we're just not there yet. But understand, you know, I know that there's, uh, parents on for secondary students as well. We're looking to get there. Uh, that's still gonna be the push that we have. And this is not ignoring, um, you know, concerns of the community and of, of board members, as you've just heard, we're not all in agreement on this. Um, we're not ignoring it, we're, we're still looking at it, we're making sure that we're doing it as safe as possible, uh, not just for, you know, the students, the staff, their families. We're still gonna look at doing that. The, the volunteers that we have from, uh, you know, the, the elementary to make sure that we can spread those kiddos out in, uh, in lunchtime is huge to this plan. And, and it's the community aspect that we've been talking about for months. Um, the community just isn't, you know, the, the different townships and, and boroughs within our, our school district, but it's the staff and it's the board, and, you know, that's all of our community. So, um, it's greatly appreciated. I know from my seat, from the rest of the board, I think I can, I can speak pretty openly and say, you know, the cooperation and everything that's gone on, what we're doing now would not be possible unless we were working together. Um, the administration has done, you know, a lot of work, uh, to make sure the contact tracing was done. And as you know, back in November, we had the pivot because we had, you know, almost six hundred kids under quarantine. I guarantee you that if we get to that level again, we'll make a pivot. Um, we're hoping that the numbers keep going down and we'll be opening up buildings, you know, with the vaccine distribution increasing and those types of things. But we're gonna continue to do this and monitor it. I, I don't know of any administration that's, uh, that does a better job than ours at making sure that we have the numbers, that you have the numbers through the dashboard, and then answer these concerns that you have. I know probably all of us could tell a story of a parent who has called us, you know, either almost in tears or in tears because of problems that they've had with their kids at home, and they feel like they failed them in their educational process. Uh, our job is to make sure that we support those folks as much as we can, and this drive to five is part of that, I believe. So I, of course, I, from my comments, it's very clear to see that I am, uh, supportive of both of these motions as well. And, uh, I look forward to the day that we can, uh, we can look past all this and that we are up back five day in person, and COVID is a distant memory. We're heading in the right direction, it's gonna take some time. Uh, but as Ms. Whittle said, you know, we also need the continued help of the community to get there, so. Uh, I'm gonna also ask Dr. Vitale for her comments.
One point of clarification, I did have a parent who saw the, uh, public agenda today, and that's why we posed that, so that people can see it, ask about cohort and live streaming. If I, if I don't feel safe sending either my, uh, child with special needs four days a week, or if I don't feel it's, the numbers are good enough yet, in, in that parent's opinion, you can still keep your children in the cohort model and live streaming will continue. Now, having said as much, it is difficult for our teachers to teach children in front of them and on the screen. It's a real challenge, you already know that. So, you know, we would prefer they come, but you do have the option. I wanna make sure that parents understand that option will not be taken off the table because clearly there will be children that are still quarantining based on community, um, transmission. There will be children with COVID, and so we wanna keep that option open, but it is difficult for our teachers to do both.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Vitale. Are there any other questions or comments? And seeing no one raise their hand, uh, I will ask Lisa to call the roll, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
No.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
And Mr. Tullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight and the affirmative and one negative.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to the next motion, and I would look for a motion to approve the following. For kindergarten to grade six in-person instruction to approve the return of all students in grades kindergarten through six who have chosen the in-person model to four days a week, Monday through Thursday, in person and remote Friday, beginning on Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This Friday, February fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, elementary teachers will be given a half day in the afternoon to prepare for this transition. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. I know we've already discussed it, folks, but I'll open it up again in case anyone has anything new that came to, to mind. Uh, is there anyone that would wish to comment on this? Seeing none and hearing none, uh, Lisa, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Tullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight and the affirmative and one negative.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Uh, we'll move on in our, uh, meeting minutes, or I'm sorry, meeting, geez, I mean, uh, in our agenda, and we will be looking next week to approve the minutes of our meeting from our work session of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and our regular meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and that's all included in your backup. Um, we'll also look to approve the treasurer's report, that's included in your backup. We'll look to approve the general fund bills in the amount of two million, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. That's also in your backup. And finally, the construction fund bills that are included in your backup that are a grand total of two million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And if you have any questions on any of those items, uh, other than the approval of the minutes, the treasurer's, general funds, construction bills, please direct those to, uh, Ms. Burtner. So if there's any questions or comments on any of those issues, I'd take them now. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to administrative action. Uh, Mr. Nickel, please.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, next week I will be making a motion with regards to the following board policies under administration action. The first, uh, and these are all detailed in your backup, is policy two-one-two, reporting student progress revised, second and final reading. The next is policy two-one-seven, graduation requirements revised, second and final reading. Policy two-one-eight-point-four, discipline of student convicted, adjudicated of sexual assault revised, second and final reading. Policy two-forty-seven, hazing revised, first reading. Policy two-four-nine, anti-bullying revised, first reading. Policy four-two-six, complaint process revised, first reading. And policy eight-two-four, maintaining professional adult student boundaries revised, first reading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nickel. Are there any questions on any of those items? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to instruction action. Uh, Ms. Harrison, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, next week we'll be looking to approve the following instruction action items. First is conferences, approve conferences. Request is provided in the backup. Second is Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania Employee Leasing Agreement. Approve the agreement with Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania to lease the services of Seneca Valley Speech Therapist Maggie Lokovich for the term of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, is provided in the backup. And last is the Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC client agreement. Approve the agreement with Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC to provide interpreting services for deaf and/or hard-of-hearing students is provided in the backup.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison. Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? Not seeing anyone, so we'll move on. Uh, business and finance, uh, action. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you. Three business finance actions for next week. The first is approving of the budget transfers. Second is the tax collector compensation resolution. Approve the resolution establishing tax collector compensation for the years twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five. And the final, the final item is the approval of change orders. Approve the constructing, the construction change orders for the new K through six elementary school at Ermen Road, all included in your backup.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. So again, look, uh, to the board for any questions on, or comments on any of those issues. Uh, the, the one comment I'd like to make just on the, the general business and finance, um, as everyone that was in, in attendance at our last, uh, board meeting knows, we approved a, a bond resolution, um, it went out for sale. Uh, we actually did a, a little bit better than what we thought, saving, uh, I believe it was, and Ms. Burtner, you can correct me, thirty-five thousand. Uh, is that the correct number roughly that we, we did better?
Probably the actual compared to the estimated per year, yes.
So, um, you know, kudos to, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Alicia Reese?
Reese Henry.
Yes, um, for, for getting that out and, uh, getting us, uh, you know, a better rate, so greatly appreciated. Um, move on to personnel action. Mr. Wooderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tullio. Next week I'll be looking to make a motion to approve the appointments, the leaves and the retirements as the board having received that in its backup material and also discuss in the executive, the se- executive session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wooderson. Uh, just so everyone's aware, we received, uh, over twenty pieces of communications, some, you know, as recently as a, a few hours ago. Um, and as you can imagine, a lot of it was, um, among, around the, uh, return to school, uh, that, that we voted on today. Um, again, you know, we, we do look at all this, even the, the things that we got at the last minute. I guarantee it will be reviewed by each and every one of us. Uh, we read the communications, um, you know, we, we welcome that feedback and we encourage everyone to continue to provide us that feedback and, and we need to know what the community is thinking, so that, that is appreciated. So at that, is there anything else that should be brought before the board? I'll look to all the different board members on the screen. I'm not seeing anything and nothing here, so I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Right.
Good night.